Test. All right, we can call the meeting to order. Tracy, could we please have a roll call vote?
Carrie Ellis.
Here.
Justin Thomas.
Here.
Tara Bowman.
Yes.
Scott Hoff. Cory Jones.
Here.
Matt Mecca.
Here.
Amy Wild.
All right, I declare a quorum and want to read the mission statement of the Palmyra Eagle Area School District. To ensure that students excel with intellect and virtue inspired by innovative educators who engage and challenge each individual. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have...can I mention the change or do I have to...does somebody else have to mention?
Somebody will need to make a motion.
Okay.
Somebody will need a motion and second.
Okay. Do I have approval of the agenda as is? No? It's Matt. It's Matt, that Mike.
We need to move to have item D.
Eleven D.
One. The Special Education and Pupil Services Director move to closed session.
Second.
Needs to be moved to an action item upon which time you can speak about it enclosed and then come out and make a decision. So you're actually technically moving it to action item.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of moving 11D to 12D? So moved. Do we have anybody that wants to speak publicly?
Where are we?
We are on seven, public comment.
No, before that, just before that.
We had changed the agenda.
Were we on the back page already?
No.
No.
No, we just had to move something out of the agenda.
Who did it from the front page?
It was inappropriate.
No problem. You got where we're at now? We're at public comment.
Yeah, I understand that part. I missed something somewhere.
It was confusing.
That's all right.
Do you...does anybody...would you like to say anything publicly or no comment?
I didn't turn on a big sheet.
Okay.
Thanks Scott for the plug you gave me of that special meeting. I really feel guilty about that.
See? There's a method to our madness. All right, eight. Board monitoring. Palmyra Eagle Area School District Strategic Plan Overview. The district leadership team. I'll move around. I'm loud, in case you don't know that about me. All right, so obviously, I assume you know who we all are but for who was ever choosing to watch this. Carrie, Tim, I'm the high school principal. Middle school, too.
Nick Jones, Associate Principal for middle and high school.
And I'm Tori Franz. I'm the co-director of teaching and learning and our EL program coordinator.
So we are going to do board monitoring, all of us kind of together. We have a brief presentation. I did just share with you guys, too, so you have it. Really, current initiatives is what we want to talk about. What we've really been focusing with with the teaching staff is trying to get them to realize that all these things that we have on really going on really fit under one big umbrella. And we want to give you guys a little bit of a look at kind of all those things we have going on and how we see them moving forward and how they relate bigger picture here of what we do of teaching and educating kids. So mission, obviously, you guys know it, you read it every time. Really, this is where we started recently and looking at, do we as an admin team, is this what we still believe in? Is this where we still are? And we definitely feel that it is. We think it does a good job of summing up what we want our kids to be, what we want our kids to do, and what we try and do as educators. So we kind of turned that into a vision statement as an admin team. And you see some highlighted words, and those are kind of some of the things we're going to talk to you about today. But that equitable, high-quality education, and we're going to talk about a little bit what we mean about equitable. All students that intellect and the social-emotional competencies. Kids are really a lot more than just what they can learn and produce and trying to make sure we hit all of that. And that college career and life ready. You know, college and career get hammered a lot, but life is really a big part of it, all of those things and navigating that you're trying to do. Ms. Franz?
No, yeah, no, Nick.
Oh, I thought you were doing.
You fought for this.
I could do it. It doesn't matter.
We did practice it.
We did, I promise. Okay, so you may or may not have seen this model before for Wisconsin. It's called the Equitable Multi-Level Systems of Support, more commonly referred to by us as the Hurricane Model. So it can be hard to translate this sometimes because at the center of this is equity and ensuring equitable access to education for all students. Then subsequently, you have the high-quality instruction, collaboration, use of data, strong supports, and then all the things around the outer edge components that we need to hone in on and focus on in order to ensure equitable access to education for our students. As an admin team, we sat down in the last couple of weeks or so, and we really want to try and hone in on some core values that we want to carry and conduct ourselves by. And as a team, we discussed equity, ensuring that each and every student has equal access to high-quality staff courses, activities, services, and resources based on their individual needs. Excellence, a well-rounded education inclusive of academic, social-emotional, college, career, and life readiness, and collaboration in which we engage in multiple stakeholders in the shared responsibility to provide highest quality of education to our students. So ultimately, we wanted to hone in on some core values when we approach a task or an initiative. These are the values we've decided to embrace in terms of moving forward and achieving best practices.
So this model that Nick just spoke to here, this is part of a bigger model in the nation, really to raise the bar for all of our students in terms of their education while at the same time closing achievement gaps. And this is the Wisconsin plan that seeks to accomplish this. And part of that Wisconsin plan involves our local education agencies coming up with their plan for how they're going to raise the academic bar at the same time while closing achievement gaps. So the initiatives that we have been working on, particularly in the last few years, have sought to do just that. So I would like to speak to the second core value here, which is excellence. And again, we refer to...when we're defining excellence, we're defining it as a well-rounded education inclusive of academic, social-emotional, and college, career, and life readiness skills. So the big initiative that we've had going on for several years now, and if you're on the Curriculum and Policy Subcommittee, you've heard me talk about this probably many times, is our Learning for All Initiative in the district. We spent a great deal of time as a staff investigating best practices, research-based practices in four main areas, those being curriculum, assessment, instruction, and grading and reporting. And what we were interested in finding out was which practices do we have control over in terms of having a positive effect on student learning? And which of those practices have the highest impact on student learning? Because we know that almost anything that we do with good intention in the classroom is going to yield some kind of effect, but we want to put our time and energy into what's going to make the most difference for our kids. So when we're talking about high-quality curriculum, we're looking at curriculum that's rigorous, relevant, and connected. So by rigorous, we mean it is standards-based, it is based off of current state and national standards. Making it relevant for our students is more than just appealing to their interests, it is giving them what they are going to need to be successful here and in life beyond these four walls here. So really tying in teaching to the whole child and not just the academics, but also that social-emotional piece, and developing those soft skills that our students are going to need to collaborate with people, to be able to, you know, really maintain professional relationships and functional relationships, both now and in the future, really. We're also looking at our curriculum and making sure that it is connected. And when we're talking about that, we're talking about both vertical alignment, making sure that it makes sense from grade level to grade level, but also a horizontal alignment. So making sure that the most important skills that we want our kids to develop competencies in are being revisited whether they're in Fayed class or English class or Spanish class, doesn't matter. Writing, for example, we want our kids to be high-quality writers, and they should be seeing and practicing that skill in all of their content areas. Reading as well, of course. When we're talking about instruction, again, with those high-impact practices, one of the biggest impacts on student learning is teacher clarity in instruction. That comes all the way from the top of the chain with instructional clarity from a unit perspective, from a course level, and then all the way down to the daily learning target and making sure that all of that is aligned and that it's very clearly articulated to students what it is we are looking for them to learn so that they can really self-assess, am I learning that? Without clarity, we can't get to differentiation for our students. If we don't know where we're going and what the end goal is, how can we begin to differentiate for our students' individual needs? How can we give them super-rich feedback on how they're doing if we don't know what it is we're trying to get them to do? And most importantly, how can we put them in the driver's seats of their own education and really get them self-assessing on if they're accomplishing their goals if we don't have a very clear understanding of that? There's a lot of research behind that. Those four indicators actually, clarity, differentiated instruction, student-centeredness, which basically is getting the students to self-regulate their learning and set goals, and providing timely, rich feedback, those have some of the biggest impacts on student achievement. So we're putting a lot of time and effort, making sure our teachers are doing a great job of that. In terms of assessment, we're looking about...we're looking at assessment that is strategically aligned and performance-based. So by strategically aligned, we are looking at all sorts of data. So whether it is looking at the forward exam or ACT or ACT Aspire data, or whether it's looking at what we're now doing, which is our FastBridge data on a district level, or even classroom data in the classroom, we want to make sure that we're using all of this to inform our instruction so that we can fill those gaps and so also we can improve our skills overall. And then with the grading and the reporting piece, we've done a great deal of work, especially in our middle and high school with this piece. We want to make sure that our grading practices that we are utilizing are actually reflective of what we believe about student learning, which is that all kids learn differently and all kids learn at different paces. So because of that, we've seen a lot with this year with giving kids multiple opportunities to demonstrate their knowledge, giving them multiple avenues to demonstrate their knowledge in a way that appeals to them as a learner. And we've actually seen some pretty good gains so far and have had positive feedback from students who appreciate having more than one opportunity to really show their knowledge.
Okay, so Tori spent a good bit of time on really talking about what's going on in our tier-one universal-level instruction because ultimately, curriculum is our bread and butter. If we have a strong, universal instruction, best practices, equitable practices, we're going to be able to capture 80% of our kids. Subsequently, and this might go back to a little bit, if you remember the intervention presentation I shared with you earlier in the year, taking over that role. Subsequently, I've developed a kind of five-year plan of really implementing strong RTI in our district, and that's to ensure equity for our students. Because sometimes, while it may be a small population of 15 or 5%, a lot of times, those students are going to take up a good bit of time trying to diagnose, evaluate, figure out what is going on to meet those kids' needs, whether it's social, emotional, academic, home environment, whatever it might be. So through our tier-two and tier-three interventions, we're working to have a systemic process in place for identifying kids through FastBridge as our new universal screener, doing progress monitoring within that, checking for growth, having teachers talk with our interventionists about what that data is telling us, are kids growing, are kids regressing, is what we're doing even effective? But we're having more intentional conversations around data in those meetings. And then that targeted, individualized intervention, that's at the secondary level, it's not as much, but you're talking about if you're identifying a kid with learning disabilities or any other needs that need to be addressed at that high. If you think of a pyramid, it's the very tippy-top with that small percentage up there. But at the core, if we can deliver strong, universal instruction with fidelity and have a guaranteed viable curriculum, we're going to capture 80% of those kids and see those scores start shooting up.
So the last of our core values is collaboration. So we kind of looked at this from an inside-out model and kind of want to talk a little bit about what we've done at each level. When I started teaching 18 years ago, you know, it's not that I taught on an island, but the amount of collaboration that happens on right now with teaching staff is definitely a lot more. So looking at classroom kind of as your center, that's the impact everybody has every day. A lot of those things Tori talked about, the direct feedback, the relationship student-teacher, which we really obviously pride ourselves on here, really student-centered learning, those are things that within the classroom we've been able to do. Some of the things going on, you know, the Makerspace, the after-school clubs at the elementary school. Ninth Hour up here has really allowed for a tremendous amount of collaboration between teachers and kids that couldn't happen otherwise. So things that we're doing, scheduling, to really build that collaboration in the community. You kind of go out to the next bubble. We like to look at ourselves as a building or as an elementary building or as a district. You know, we're carving out PLC time, vertical meeting time, to get everybody on board to allow those conversations to occur. You know, in my building, which obviously I can speak to better, my science department meets twice a month on an average month, and they're able to have conversations they never had time to have before, and we've really been able to do a lot of things. Professional development, you know, really trying to gear professional development towards those initiatives we're doing, towards those things that we believe in. Safety plan is a huge one, district-wide, really getting that on board and doing that. Working towards K-12 vertical alignment, like we said. We want skills that we teach from kindergarten to 12th grade to link together and to see that connection between them. We want to close gaps, we don't want to have those areas that we aren't teaching the correct things in. I'm looking at my list because I got some elementary things I don't always know so much about. I think I hit all of that. So then really, the community. You know, Tori and I argued, and Dr. Bloom can attest, whether this should be called collaboration or community. I struggle with when you say the word "community," I think of the town in which I reside. Really, we're talking about bigger than that in my mind, but we are talking about things we do with the community, things to get people in. Stephanie is a huge part of what we're doing. Everything we're doing right now is trying to do that collaboration. You know, athletics, changing conferences, building relationships with youth programs, you know, all of that is trying to work with the community. Things like having Mike Hoff go to Generac and take kids out, our specialized kids that go out and are part of things, our work release program, but trying to get ourselves out of an island within a town and really get people to realize we really are part of the community. Last one is really that state and national networking, and that's at a big level. We talk about CISA a lot, we do a lot with them, you know, they're a great resource in Whitewater. Our Run, Hide, Fight Initiative, the training that we did a few years ago, you know, that's a huge...using something outside and bringing it in. I'm looking, you know, just conferences, we have a couple math conferences coming up, we have our English people and music people are going somewhere next week, but using those expertise that we can't provide, especially to those people in one department world, you know, all my specials up here, a lot of them are on their own island, getting them to be able to have professional conversations at the same level is really something that is key. So really, like I said, I think, you know, 30 years ago, teaching, you came, you sat in your room, you did what you did. It's really a bigger job now, it takes on a lot more, there's a lot more responsibilities. I just sent out an email, I don't think you guys get those emails, but Dr. Bloom got it. You know, Christmas is a great time of year, holidays are awesome, they're not awesome for all of our kids. To some of our kids, we're the only constant thing in their lives. So this circle really does involve a lot of things and a lot of moving pieces to really impact a kid's life. I mean, one kid is really at times what we're looking at. So kind of to wrap up, really, the point of this is to kind of give you an overview of all those things we're doing really for that career, college, and life-ready. All of these things are currently functioning within our district at various levels of kind of, well, I don't want to say expertise, but you know, we've been in some of them for various levels of time, but really, they're all at the center of what we feel those core values are, of the equity, of the excellence, and of the collaboration. So getting those things out there for people working together. Anybody have anything else? Okay, do you guys have any questions? I threw a whole lot at you. Oh.
I guess my question is like what Tori said with the multiple chances of learning, the reassessing, the multiple avenues to show their...I'm not seeing that, and I know that's a lot of talking to other parents that they're concerned that so much is being placed on, it's just like on tests. And whether that's supposed to be happening or not, it is, and that kids are really stressed out because they feel like their whole grade is based on a test and that they don't do well on this test, and that it's so much work that they have to do, you know, to retake and that they're not getting these avenues to show their learning. And I think that's a concern that I've heard.
Okay, so I first want to make sure I'm understanding your question correctly. I heard you say two things. The first was multiple avenues to demonstrate knowledge, and then the second was worrying about emphasis on their grade being...
Just on tests.
Just on a test.
There are multiple avenues where they used to have assignments that they were graded on and things like that. Now they're feeling so much pressure to do well on these tests even though they can retake it.
Right. Right.
If kids aren't good test takers, that's a lot of pressure on a kid when they don't have multiple avenues. They may be supposed to, but that's not happening.
Right. What is happening and what should be happening is that everything is connected. So teachers are planning their units of instruction with the end in mind. So what do we want a student to be able to do by the end of this particular unit? It might be a skill, it might be giving a presentation on whatever, writing an essay, Spanish class, having a conversation, greater conversation in Spanish, and then really taking a look at that and being very intentional about planning your instruction to scaffold student understanding to be able to do that task. Best practices in grading, we'll say that it is best practice to make sure that your grade is reflecting the level of student achievement of a predetermined benchmark skill or task. Because of that, the emphasis on the grade is that end goal in mind, which is that end of the unit task. The process is all still there of the whole learning process demonstrating, you know, some competency on those skills that lead up to that skill, that little subs...those sub-skills, those building blocks, if you will. But because that is part of the learning process and not necessarily the end product of really what the kid has achieved and known, the emphasis of the grades is on that summative piece. So the hope is that by better connecting that end piece, that summative, with what they're getting along the way and providing them with opportunities for retakes, redos, corrections, to really give them that rich feedback on those tasks that by the time they get to that bigger task where it's going to be worth more of their grade, that they're very well-prepared for that.
I think the problem is a lot of, I know, I've talked with Carrie, a lot of the kids aren't doing the tasks leading up to that because they don't count, and they're not seeing the value. And then by the time they take the test, the whole class is moving on to something or the summative assessment, their whole class is moving on. So they're still struggling back here trying to catch up, retake this test, doing all this work to try to earn the right to retake this test by mastering this stuff, and then they're not doing the work leading up to the next test. And I think that's...
No, I want to just say that I...this microphone is kind of funny, but anyway, I don't disagree, but I've seen less of that. So I think early on, it was, oh, homework doesn't count, so I'm not going to do my homework. But as they've learned the retake process, I hear that way less from teachers. I hear way less of they're not doing anything, I don't know how to manage the retake, blah, blah, blah. I've heard way less of that. So there is an intrinsic learning curve, I'm not going to say there's not. I mean, we all went through a pretty traditional education system. A change like this, it is drastic, I'm not going to say that it's not in some ways. But across the board, I've heard less from teachers because they now know exactly what you said, to earn the retake, I have to do something to relearn. I have to show something to know I...you can take the same test 10 times, you never learn the material, what's the point after a while? Are there still some kids probably burning the candle at both ends? There are, you know, and I can't go back to grading homework just because of that. You know, we still have formative assessments, that's still part of the grade, it's not a large part of it. I also want to just, I think part of what Amy's saying is we are widening our teachers' perspective on what a summative assessment is. When you hear the word summative assessment, I think everybody's brain automatically thinks two pages, front and back, 10 questions, 100 questions. We are really working to widen their thought process on it doesn't have to be that.
Labs.
Yeah, labs and essays, and why do you need 10 questions when they can show they learned it in four? You know, really, what is the point? Is the point that they show you learned it or that they show they can correctly do it 15 times? You know, and that's a shift in teachers, too. It's a shift across the board. But in the end, if you've sat down and looked at an ACT, I can give you a thing to take one if you want, it's understanding the test, it's how to read the questions, and it's way more skill-based than it is memorization-based, you know? And that's what our kids need versus repetitive knowledge, things they can get off their device, things like that. Tori, I don't know if you want to jump in on anything else?
No, that was pretty real serious.
All right, there you go, sorry. Anybody else?
I guess my only other question then would be is with data on this program, has there been a correlation between the program being implemented and test scores or things dropping? Because looking at, using DPI report cards, I know my boss's kids go to Kettle Marine, so I know they do this at Kettle Marine as well. So if you look at report cards over the last three years between the two districts, the middle schools are dropping each year on their scores, the high schools are actually going up. So is...are we focusing enough on maybe those middle school kids or we need to focus more on them?
So what's funny to me is I actually think, and I'm not slamming my high school teachers, so please don't go telling them that, but I think the middle school teachers do the most of exactly what Amy's talking about. You have a kid in Tammy's class, there's multiple avenues, different presentations. I think very seldom does Tammy actually hand a paper test and ask you to do it. Middle school kids are middle school kids, you know? I think across the board, and we've spent a lot of time looking at middle school report cards, pretty much everybody's middle school report card is the lowest report card. You know, it's difficult, we're only two grades, you're only 120 kids, there's a lot of volatility and shift in it. You know, the test is the test, I mean, if we want to specifically look at forward, how we can better prepare them for that test, I don't know. I honestly don't, I'm going to be honest with that. I can continue to give incentives, I can continue to do test prep, but in the end, we believe what we're shifting in education will make them stronger academic students, which we believe should equate to a state report card. I can't promise, I mean, I can't promise that, and you know that. I mean, is that number in the back of my mind? It is, but that career, life, and college-ready is really where I want them to be. And you're right, the high school report card is higher. It's...and they're mostly the same kids. So other than the volatility in the numbers when we talk to DPI and subgroups that slide in and out, I don't have a good answer for how can they score here when they're eighth graders but here when they're sophomores. I don't know if that answered your question or made you have more questions, but... I don't think it would be directly linked, I don't look at it personally as a direct link to standard-based grading, because there are lots of standard-based grading schools that have very high report cards. There are. I don't know. Sorry, I got to take off. Go ahead.
There we go. All right, so one of, in terms of looking at our interventions and how we're looking at data with kids coming up, some of the work that I'm doing is starting to collaborate with the elementary buildings so we can catch some of these gaps sooner and to also look at, you know, are things consistent? And I'm working with Tori and the curriculum department as well, is, you know, where are those gaps? And if we can catch them in that first month in seventh grade and identify them that they might need an intervention, and then it's a systemic, fluid process in and out of intervention to tackle skills specifically tied to a learning target, specifically tied to a standard, et cetera. I believe if we shore up the tier-one universal and solid, viable curriculum, test scores should be a byproduct. test scores should be a byproduct of just good teaching. And I truly believe that. So I think the more collaboration that occurs between coming up from the elementary into the middle, because I'll be honest, I've been to quite a few districts and looked at report cards as well, and everybody has that puberty dip, and then all that emotion and drama that goes on in middle school, and it's just a roller coaster. But if we can be addressing that through our curriculum, through our social-emotional learning, making sure we're giving kids a safe place to be themselves and figure out this weird change that's going on, I believe that we can really shore up, and then when they get to high school, they have those skills built in to, yes, the homework piece, are we grading the compliance of doing the homework, or are we grading what they actually know to do? And for some of our kids, I was a kid in high school, I didn't do my homework, but I knew what was going on, I just didn't want to do it. I didn't do well in high school because I wasn't being compliant. So we're trying to separate that compliance to the work piece and what you actually know. And it is a paradigm shift, and it's a philosophical shift, that is an uphill battle.
Did it come, it seems like according to your curriculum policy report, there's a lot of time being spent on creating rubrics and different things like that, didn't it? Is it, are we recreating the wheel here, or did it come with, it didn't come with any of that stuff?
Oh, a little talking. Curriculum is more than just the resource itself. Really, if you have high-quality curriculum, you probably have several different resources that inform what you're doing on a day-to-day. What we find with a lot of the curriculum resources that we have, and they are getting better, is that oftentimes, the task is tied to the information itself. What we want our students to be able to do involves like the skills of actually applying that information to do something. It depends, it depends on the resource that you're looking at. Resources are getting a lot better, and they do have a lot of that already. But what we are hoping to do by really taking a look at our standards, developing those core benchmark skills that we are hoping our kids are able to do within that certain content area, is number one, to be able to identify those skills that are going to transcend horizontally, so that we can do more and more reinforcement between, you know, whether they're in FAYET, or, you know, Spanish, or English, or whatever. And then secondly, that curriculum stays in place regardless of what the resources that's informing it. Does that make sense? So your textbook might change, your online platform might change, you know, between today and tomorrow, quite honestly, but, and those assessments that are built in might change along with it. But we still have this constant of what it is we want students to do as based on state and national standards, those power standards, because the reality is that if we were to teach to depth to every single standard that is laid out, it would take about two and a half years to effectively teach to all those standards. And there's a lot of overlap between them, but we need to make sure that, you know, we're trusting our teachers as professionals to really analyze what those are, identify what the power standards are, the most important ones, and be teaching those to depth. Because at the end of the day, I think Carrie or Nick alluded to it, the kids don't need to know random information anymore. They can look up anything they want on their cellphone. My daughter is five, and she does it, and she can't even write yet. She just talks into it, right? Google Speak. And she's able to come up with whatever, which is terrifying to me as a mom. But, you know, we need to empower our kids to be better collaborators, to be better writers, to be better thinkers and problem solvers. And so by really aligning our curriculum to those skills and creating those rubrics that are going to give them high-quality feedback on their competency on those skills, we're matching our mission and our vision to what they're actually getting in the classroom, and that's the whole point. That's the kind of education they need. And that's going to make them, you know, go forth with intellect and with virtue.
Sorry, I just want to add one more thing. A real-world example of this. So I currently teach a class at UW-Whitewater adjunct, and the textbook is whatever textbook they gave me. But I have a syllabus that's aligned out to standards, and then all my rubrics are, there's an assignment, say, one of them is adaptive technology for severe and multiple disabilities, and there's a rubric aligned to that. It doesn't matter what book I'm pulling the case study out of. It's, everything I'm doing is aligned to that standard. So especially at the high school level, for them to see that format is going to be much more relevant to them for when they get to high school, correction, college. You know, yes, some of the lower-level classes, there is that compliance piece still going on in some of those lower-level undergrad classes, but when you're getting into those higher-level thinking classes, regardless of the resource, because we could buy a textbook today and we need another one in two years, you know, the resource is going to change, but our curriculum is going to be the constant.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. You keep going, you were doing such a bang-up job. You're in charge tonight.
All right, yes, thank you, leadership team. Curriculum policy committee report. Okay. Curriculum policy committee met earlier today, and we discussed redefining ready program that we're looking into to kind of be a supplement to our state testing scorecards and report cards, and it just kind of gives a little more, a little more in-depth information there in front of you for you to review. We have not made any decision on that. There would be no cost to that. It's something we could just kind of do on our own. There are two policies on the agenda tonight for a second reading, and we would appreciate your approval toward those. And then we have another policy, revised graduation requirements on the agenda for first reading. And other than that, that was about all we discussed in curriculum and policy. Okay, thank you, Tara. Next, building and grounds committee report.
All right, met earlier this evening. First off, there was, Rich is working on potential water drainage issue down by, into the Palmyra mobile home community. They made some initial contact, but since then, he hasn't heard anything back. So waiting to see how that plays out as far as, yeah, where, if there's a culvert that's plugged or something like that down by the tracks or whatnot. Been contacted, as a district, been contacted, essentially leading us to have discussions with We Energies in regards to solar panels being installed on top, on the rooftops of some of our buildings. So we approve to proceed with that as far as putting our name in the hat and seeing if we can potentially, you know, have that done. Right now, they're looking at be the Eagle Elementary and the high school, middle school, because they need new, it would be after hopefully the new roof is installed on here as well. But anyhow, so that's hopefully something that's coming. If it all works out, hopefully it leads to about $34,000 of income for us. So also, the safety grant, still on track to have the entryways in both Palmyra Elementary and Eagle Elementary redone as far as making that a more safe area. And currently, Rich is $63 below budget on that. So, and that's supposed to take place mostly over winter break. That's it.
If We Energies can't use the school roof, they could use mine. I'll take the $34,000. Public relations committee, Carrie?
Yes, we met earlier tonight. Stephanie gave us a nice report since she was not able to be here tonight. The district newsletter went out. Available, there are extra copies available in the school office and local libraries if anybody needs some. The athletic records, the football and boys' basketball record sheets are now on display in the cases near the high school gym. They are all updated. Cross-country, track, and golf should be done by the end of the month. Honor and educator, there are six current and retired educators that were nominated this winter. The awards will be presented prior to winter break. Mike Hoff and the tech ed students are creating the plaques again for us and the shelving. Proceeds from the program are being used for the additional shelving and also to offset the newsletter costs this year. So it's a, it's a nice win all around. January, February, we are going to try and get another newsletter out before the referendum. We will need to have all information for the newsletter into staff by January 11th to be able to have those out on time. So we are going to have to work on that, getting that information together, and what we want to do with that mailing. And that is it for PR.
When is, what is the deadline of when we're going to know when our election is in February? It wasn't January 15th. Can we, can we hold a spot in the newsletter and kind of delay it till after we have that information?
I'll talk to Steph about it.
Okay. I know it's cutting it really close, but...
We have everything else maybe ready to go, and that's the month piece we're waiting on, maybe. We'll have to see.
Okay. I should have brought that up at the PR committee, but I didn't. Is this, can I ask Scott to give a report on his meeting last night at the Village, or is that not?
We'll do it later. We'll do it in the, we'll do it down in your board comments.
Okay, that'd be fine. Administrators' report. All right. Consent agenda, consent agenda is approved altogether with one motion if we did do the change. So if I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised.
Any questions or comments? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved as amended. Action items. Action item A, consider approval of second reading of two new policies, policy 8300 continuity and organizational operation plans, and two, information security.
Make a motion to approve the second reading of new policies, 8300 and 8305.
Any questions or comments? Again, this is the second reading of these policies. There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Action item A, approved. B, consideration approval of first reading of the revised policy 5460 graduation requirements.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of revised policy PO 5460 graduation requirements.
Any questions or comments? I believe it was in your board packet for you guys to review. Okay, there being none, I'll take a motion, a vote to approve action item B. Well, we had, I just need the vote. Sorry. I said it. All those in favor?
Aye.
You're making me nervous. I know. All right, action item C, consider approval of Start College Now program choices for spring 2019 as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the Start College Now program choices for spring of 2019 as presented.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, I thought we moved D till after closed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So district administrators' report.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. A couple of notes of thanks and appreciation to our district music staff, Sarah Mickelson and Brittany Pfaff, elementary concerts, both last week, Monday, Tuesday evening, this week, Monday, Tuesday evening. Scott Hine, middle school, high school band, has their concert this week, Thursday at 6:30. Hope that some of you will be able to make it there. Thank you to Scott and to his students as well. Wanted to thank Renee Cookstrom for coordinating some of the National Honor Society students to provide childcare for last week's forum, which was held on Wednesday evening, and also for tomorrow evening's forum. Last week was held in the middle school here in this building. Next week, or tomorrow evening, rather, will be held at Eagle Elementary School. So thank you to those folks. Also, huge thank you for a very unique circumstance here, thanks to the response of our medical emergency response team. We literally saved a life in this building. And so thanks and appreciation. A number of those individuals are here this evening. There's a reason why we have a safety plan. There's a reason why we practice and drill in that plan, because one never knows when something might occur. And I don't want to, in any way, shape, or form, belittle the fact that literally these people did save the life of a colleague. So kudos to those folks for their willingness to be involved in that process. Huge thank you to Lisa Jensen. It's great. We appreciate the board's support for that position, for us to be able to have a nurse at least part-time, and it just coincidentally occurred that Lisa was in the building at the time when that happened. So thank you to all those folks that were involved. Again, an election reminder, for those of you who have a current seat up, that would be both Mrs. Alice and Mr. Jones. Deadline for filing paperwork for non-candidacy would be December the 21st. Deadline for filing to appear on the ballot would be January the 2nd. I don't anticipate having numbers to have to have a primary, so in all likelihood, then members of the school board would occur at the spring election on April the 2nd. We have tabled for discussion later on this evening, hiring recommendation for director of specialized pupil services. We'll return to that later on. I did just, and we joke about this every year, but literally in today's mail, the WASB delegate resolutions occurred. It appears as though the timing of their mailing and our December board meeting is usually the same. So, Mr. Hoff, you probably have your packet at home as well. We'll review those and then come with a recommendation, since Scott serves as your board delegate and will serve in that capacity latter part of January. At this time, that's all the information that I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Announcements and board comments.
So last night, in continuing on with the referendum information sessions, we attended, Steve and Sharon and I attended the Palmyra Town Board meeting, presented exactly the same information we did, and just a more condensed form. It was received informationally. There was some good questions. That was pretty much that. We'll be attending Palmyra's Village Board on Monday, and tomorrow, we will be in Eagle with the large public community forum. Right now, they've got the gym set up for the band concert, or the concert I was just at, so there's 200 seats set up as it is. And I know Matt's got some more if we need him to bring out. So we'll see how tomorrow night goes.
I'd like to add that I do have, by virtue of the Palmyra Lions Club, fishery raffle tickets available. If anyone's interested, see me after the meeting.
Well, and I want to thank Scott publicly. I thought he did a great job Wednesday, and I know this is very time-consuming and taking away from his family. So thank you for going out there for us.
Happy to do it.
Better you than me. All right. Upcoming events and meetings tomorrow night, as stated... night, as stated, we've got the referendum information meeting, 6 o'clock PM in Eagle. Curriculum and Policy Committee meeting Thursday, January 3rd at the district office. Building and Grounds meeting, 6 o'clock Tuesday, January 8th. Finance Committee, 6:20, January 8th. Public Relations meeting, 6:40, January 8th. And then the regular board meeting at 7 o'clock Tuesday night on January 8th, right here in this very room. At this time, if nothing else needs to be said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to closed, I'd like to consider a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Make a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Tracy, can I get a roll call for that?
Carrie Alice, Justin Thomas, Tara Bowman, Scott Hoff, Corey Jones, Matt Mecca, Amy Wilde.
Thank you again, everyone, for attending. No pushing and shoving on your way out.